Okay, all councilors have their mics on. Make sure your mics are on.
I don't know. It's whatever.
Do you control when this shows up on the screen?
No, you're gonna do this. Oh, I can do it. I will control.
Do you want to open? I think so.
Almost 30 seconds.
That was dreadful.
We'll get back there.
Okay, Rose, are you ready? Councilors, are you ready? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome to the July 14th, 2015 meeting of the McMinnville City Council. Once again, you might have read as you walked into the room that since our meetings are both broadcast over the middle community media, and I don't see K O Y C here tonight, so it looks like we will not have a meeting broadcast simulcast by K O Y C. But we ask that at this time, that if you have a cellphone on, that you silence your cellphone and keep from texting, receiving, or sending texts during the meeting for the courtesy of others. And if you do have an important call, that you go out in the lobby to take it. So if we can get everybody to follow those kind of guidelines, we'd really appreciate it. So at this time, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Counselor Jeffries for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Kevin. This is a time that we reserve on our agenda for citizens to come speak to the council on anything that may not be on our agenda tonight. Of course, there are some things that we cannot discuss tonight, and I'll go ahead and list those. Number one, if it's a matter that the city is currently in litigation, the council will not be able to discuss any of those matters. If it's a quasi judicial land use matter or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date, we will not be able to discuss those in this session. And we ask that if it's an item, if your testimony regards an item that's already on our agenda, you wait till that agenda item comes up, and then you raise your hand and we'll call you forward. So would anybody like to speak or address the council for anything that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll ask one more time. Would anybody like to address the council for anything that's not on our agenda tonight? All right, hearing none, we'll move on across council in your packet where the minutes of the June 9th, 2015 dinner and the June 9th, 2015 regular meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review their minutes? If so, I will entertain, and if there's no corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 19th dinner and regular meeting. We have a move by Counselor here, but I have a second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jeffrey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the minutes of the June 9th, 2015 dinner and regular city council have been approved. That takes us to old business, and we have one item of old business tonight. It's a thing that the council always looks forward to, and that's an update on our McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, our M E D P activities from Jody Christensen. So Jody, come on forward. And again, Jody, if you could sign in, just let us know. You might have to pull the microphone a little bit close to you so we can make sure we hear you.
Is this all right?
Yeah, we want to make sure they get your voice on TV really well.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for inviting me to come and give you an update on the work that we're doing at the McMinnville Economic Development Partnership. As you know, we believe it is our responsibility to be a leader in the grow our own approach to business development for the city. We are committed to strategic investments in retention, expansion, and attraction for more advanced manufacturing for our community, and that includes food processing and aviation. This evening, I've given you a packet. In your packet is an executive summary outlining our work to date for this year. Our program year starts October through September, so we're midway. I've also given you an update on our McMinnville Works internship program, which we're week five right now. And I also wanted to share one of our newest marketing materials, if you will, and that's a branded thumb drive. This is part of strategic marketing that we work very closely with the National Recruitment Officer and a number of site selectors that we've met over the last couple of years. And we thought, well, we're going to print a lot of fancy material and drop it off with people. And they said, no, make it simple, put everything on a thumb drive, and hand it to someone or email it to them. So that's what we've done. Tonight, I've loaded on just a very generic overview of the city of McMinnville profile. So it's an example of what we do. I have a document in my office, and I actually customize it based on the first three questions that a prospect or a site selector asks. So I just move the information forward. Not too many organizations are using this now. They're still printing a lot of material, so we're saving ourselves a lot of...
That's brilliant. That really is.
Thank you. The other thing that I wanted to share with you is something that we're extremely proud of, and this is a collaboration with the News Register. I just said, nobody wants printed material. That's in a recruitment effort. But when we get our message out, when I go to speak to groups, when I have the opportunity to talk to other organizations about the work that we're doing, the work that we do with Team Oregon, I do like to share our full story. And one way that we do that is through this magazine that's done on an annual basis with the News Register. And the reason I like this is because it's manufacturers telling their story. So we get to help connect them to this opportunity. It's a great way to showcase the people that are doing business in our community and the importance of manufacturing. So we do, that is the one printed piece that you'll see in our office, and I have ordered a number of them, and I take them everywhere. So that is, those are some important pieces that we've been working on. I want to assure you that the efforts to continue to market and support getting the Evergreen campus occupied is a top priority for us, continuing to grow our local companies and bring strategic resources to them. Obviously, our internship program, McMinnville Works, is a high priority for us because our companies continue to be engaged at a high level. And then we're also investors in Team Oregon, advanced manufacturing, and food processing. So I just wanted to share with you a little bit, our office, M E D P, leads the state's advanced manufacturing recruitment effort. So we manage 35 investors in that, and we're able to help collectively drive that investment for a high leverage point. And I'll be quite frank, and I know the press is in the room, we're there because this meets our needs for our companies. So we invest in that team, and I spend a majority of my time working all of the resources within that team so that I can help companies like Amerson Sheet Metal and Solid Form Fabrication and Betty Lou's. So we use that time very strategically. It's over a $35,000 investment that we can use to our advantage and also help other organizations throughout the state. We also spent considerable time, staff energy, and investment in rebranding our organization as well as launching our new website. I think you've seen the website. We're quite pleased with that. The work was, it's really innovative around delivering the economic development message. It does not look like a traditional site. It's very much about telling our story, and that's a big piece of how we can attract and continue to showcase our companies. So we're very proud of that. Websites are living stories, living documents, so you need to continually generate new content, and so we continue to work on that as well. Our office is managing over 30 prospects and leads. A majority of those are tied to Evergreen. However, we do have a number of expansion projects that are taking place in the industrial park right now. We have worked very closely with the state to help reach out to regional and national recruitment professionals to get this in their hands. I've done two things. I want them to take a look at the material, and then I ask them, how can we make it better? Because I know that everybody's going to have a way for us to improve that, and we've got to get really good at telling our message. And so far, it's been small tweaks, so I'm quite proud of that. Again, we're going to continue to be very engaged with the teams, and we're also looking at enhancing our summer internship program. We're going to continue to kind of get through this year. Chris Poole, who's an intern from Lynnfield College, is very smart and coming up with lots of great processes, so he's saving a lot of staff time. So we'll see how that can enhance the program. As you may know, and remember, M E D P and you, our partners, received the Oregon Economic Development Collaboration Partnership of the Year Award for our McMinnville Works program, and we're quite proud of that. But more importantly, Cascade Steel won an award from the Steel Manufacturers Association. They won the Achievement in Community Involvement Award for their contribution to McMinnville Works. And really, that award speaks very highly because that's showing how an industry partner took that engagement in the internship program and received a national award for that. So that's really why we're doing this, is to help our companies, and I'm very, very delighted for them. I also wanted to publicly thank Creative Company and Lift Systems for their help with our website, and I wanted to, in addition, thank McMinnville Industrial Promotions for their additional investment in our organization to help cover that as well. So looking ahead to 2015, 2016, where are the opportunities for us? As we look at where we invest our time and energy, we have been working and getting better at understanding how the state is going to be marketing properties. We see that the Oregon Prospector site that they're using is in phase one. We think it'll be much more aggressive this next year, more data-driven. We'll continue to market our properties. That is our site selector resource. So when a company comes to Oregon and they want to locate, we have to, by protocol, submit applications through that system, and it's been cumbersome. So we're seeing some great improvements, so we're excited about that, but we'll have to start developing materials to load onto that site. We are looking forward to developing a partnership with Visit McMinnville. I had the opportunity to visit with Erin and Dawn. I am confident that the money that's being invested in Visit McMinnville will have a ripple effect for our organization and the intentions behind why the partnership exists for advancing manufacturing in our community. There's going to be lots of collateral information and design work and photographs and videos that are all being developed within the Visit McMinnville framework. Obviously, it has a tourist intention behind it, but those are libraries that we'll have access to. So it really is accelerating our marketing ability by having access to those professional tools, so I'm very excited about that, looking forward to, you know, getting their legs on the ground, figuring out what they're going to be doing, but then how do we, as an economic development organization, connect? And I think Don brings with him the experience they had in Bend. So we're going to hit the ground running where it took them a bit of time to figure out how ec dev organizations fit in with that. Time flies. In 2016, September will be 10 years old. I started nine years ago in September, so this next year in 2016, I think it's very important for us to share the history of our organization and the work that's been done by and by and with all of our partners over the last 10 years. It's important, too, to take a forward look. So we've had 10 years of learning, of understanding what the fabric of our community, there's significant changes happening with the bypass, with the potential of who might be located out at Evergreen, with the construction and the expansions that are going on in the industrial park. We're leveraged and, in some cases, at a tipping point, and I think that the next 10 years will be very exciting, and it'll be important to take a look at how we can support that. As with any organization, there's a natural progression. So nine years ago, when I walked in an office and there was a fold-up chair and a phone, and Celia Wheeler said, so there you go. Made a lot of phone calls, took a lot of training, visited around the state to figure out what is this thing called economic development. I'm very proud of the program that's been created with your support and with the partners' support, with the help of the city, with so many people that care about moving forward in this work. I think manufacturing has a higher profile now. I think people understand lean and high performance in a different way. I think we're committed to workforce around skills development, and I think those conversations are all because we came together and really understood that that's what economic development is. It's not just about bringing in new companies, it's about supporting the ones we have and making sure that people have an opportunity to go to work. But in that case, we've experienced something unusual in our organization, and we've brought in entry-level staff. We've spent time nurturing, coaching, training them, and giving them opportunities to really grow professionally, and both of those staff have been recruited out of our office. While it's a compliment, it's challenging because it's a cycle that's very hard to continue to do because it takes about a year to train someone into the position. There's just a level of skill that we're looking for. So I would ask that as we move forward to plan the next 10 years of work and how we want to grow this program to support our advanced manufacturers, that I have the opportunity to come before you and before your next budget cycle and talk about some of the next steps that we'd like to see with M E D P and how we'd like to support staff that allows us to give excellent customer service and continue to help our companies. At this time, too, I want to extend a thank you from our Board of Directors. I can tell you that over the last nine years, I've had a variety of projects. Evergreen has been a challenging one. The campus is a high-profile property, but it's unusual because it's in the courts. It's not a traditional owner has a building, would like to sell the building, here are all the things we bring to the table. This is a very different animal. And I can tell you that city staff has been extraordinary and has an exceptional reputation in the way that they've handled this challenging situation. They've been always accommodating, always available. They are the ones talking directly to some of the clients, potential prospects, the realtors, and I hear over and over again, there's something really special about the way McMinnville does business. So thank you. You make our job at M E D P much easier because we have this kind of city, and so the board thanks you, and I thank you. I'd also like to, once again, extend a special thank you to the McMinnville Industrial Promotions for an additional investment to help us deliver the website, and also they supported additional funding for our intern coordinators, so I wanted to publicly thank them. And I want to thank the city for, also, we were down a computer, and you stepped up and provided a computer for our office for the summer, so we really appreciate that as well. So thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let's start with you, Remy. Any questions, comments?
No questions, but thank you tremendously for the work that you do. As you know, I've reached out to you on the McMinnville Works program. What you probably don't know is that because of this publication, I was able to talk with a supplier of mine that's also based in Yarmulke County and send them for parts that were otherwise unavailable for 3D printing, which allowed me to get bottles screen printed. So not only do I appreciate the work that you do, but generally, and as a member of the council, but I very personally appreciate the work that you do as well, and I love the programs bringing in interns, and I think the McMinnville Works program is a really wonderful program, and I'd love to see that strength. So I look forward to seeing you back here and seeing how council can support you and meet your needs.
Thank you. That's great to hear about the supply chain connection.
Thank you, Remy Scott.
Jody, you know, you talk about looking forward over the next 10 years, and with the bypass coming in the next two years. From your perspective, from your vision, what impact is the bypass going to have on McMinnville from a manufacturing and economic development perspective?
Well, the low-hanging fruit, obviously, is that our companies have to adjust their transportation schedule based on the traffic they're going to face in Dendi. Some of our companies have had to have, they normally would just ship any time of day, they've had to adjust it to a night shift so that they can get through, because it costs money to sit in traffic. So it's going to ease up the logistics of moving product. I also think it's going to help our companies access a different type of workforce. So I think that when people can start to look at the opportunities in our community as our companies are growing, as they start to expand, taking advantage of new markets, that maybe people will not, you know, be so likely to leave the community, that they might be more live, work, play right here, the convenience of that. Because I think there will still be people who haven't paid attention to what's happening here. So I think as companies start to announce expansion or opportunity because of the ease of traffic and the ease of logistics, that that's going to be positive. I also think that there's a lot of unknowns about the bypass, that there's going to be ripple effects that we're going to experience because of that. So I think people may, I think it's just going to give a higher profile to our community because of the ease of access in and out. I think that that's, it's going to take the stress of that congestion that we've faced for so long that we've just had to deal with. So I think that's part of it as well.
And then one last question, and we've kind of talked around it, and as a council, we've talked to you, and that's Evergreen. And we know, you know, the legal ramifications, and as you mentioned, property being in trust, but we're moving down the path little by little as things are coming together. I guess what I would just ask, and again, I know you can't be specific, I know, you know, you're under confidentiality in many instances. Are you feeling we're coming to a point that that gem is going to be utilized in a good way to help us be able to continue to have that beautiful piece of property and utilize for the community in the way it was at one time?
So I know that there's quite a bit of activity. We, obviously, the marketing team through CBRE is really the point of contact for that. We're often brought in as representing the community and answering questions about the There's a saying, it's a lot of hurry up and wait. So I can tell you that there are consistent inquiries by the same prospects, looking at the property from different angles. I would be not, it would not be appropriate for me to try to guess. I know those properties will sell. I know businesses will be in there. I know people will be employed. This has just been a very challenging process. You know, I don't think we'll be having this conversation in three years. That I can guarantee you, but that's about it. But I do, I do know that there's consistent activity by the same clients or customers looking at that property.
And then just last, again, I would echo what you'll probably hear from everyone, how much we appreciate what you do. You are, you're standalone, but you are kind of a part of the city department in and of itself, and we recognize that. And so when you mention, you know, before our next budget cycle, do it early so we have time.
Excellent.
That would be my suggestion from that perspective. But again, thank you for all that you're doing, and so critical is what you do.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Scott. Kelly.
I really don't have any questions, but thank you so much for all that you're doing. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Kevin.
You know, as I have an opportunity in my work to travel around the state, working in chambers and whatnot, I'm always amazed how many people know your name and the work that you do out here. So you're making a big impression on the rest of the state, and that affects well on the city, and I really appreciate it. It's one who has a lot of family working in manufacturing. You're doing a great job, and these businesses are thriving, in part because of the resources you're able to bring to the table for them, and just can't thank you and your organization enough.
Well, thank you for supporting us.
You know, I guess I'll just close with a couple of things, is that, number one, I think Jody realized how much, as mayor, I appreciate, and on behalf of council, how much appreciate, we appreciate her and M E D P, and I think we have the person with the right personality and the right job. If Jody wants something to happen, chances are it's going to happen. Might be a little later than sooner, but it's gonna happen. But you know, I want to close just with a couple of things. If I go back to when the city first worked with a bunch of downtown businesses, when M D A was spun off from the chambers, the committee, and went to the Downtown Association, and then when we had issues with losing some industrial, and the city basically, as good as we could do through Doug Montgomery's area, is that we just weren't capable of detracting as we weren't in economic development. Now I look at Visit McMinnville, you know, and look at the destination marketing organization we put together. I think the reason I tie those three together, because I think the success, each one builds on the success of the other, and Jody may comment to that, but my feeling is, the top elected official as mayor, is that it is not up to a city to run economic development, it is not up to a city to run tourism, it is not up to a city to run a business district. It's up to the city to ensure that those things happen by putting together good partnerships and ensuring that we have the organizations in place that can do us, freeing the city and the council to do the things that we need to do. And I just guess I'm one of those that believes the less government that gets involved with that, the better off we are, and by putting together the M D A, M E D P business or Visit McMinnville, we're doing it. Let the people that know about those kind of things do those kind of things, and we just have to make sure as a council that we support them, give them the support they need, and ensure that they do what's best for our citizens. So Jody, you've been a big part of that over the last nine years.
Oh, thank you.
But you've been, and people don't realize, Jody's also been a very, played a very big role, has been very critical to the implementation and the funding that went behind the bypass too, because she knows what I think it means, the potential economic development in McMinnville. So Jody, thank you for your report, and we look very much forward to your next one.
Thank you.
And next one. And next one. And next one. So you're trying to understand what I'm telling you.
You got it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jody.
Okay, that'll move us on to new business. For new business, we have two items under new business, and what I'm going to do is turn them both over to Jay Pearson, and he can do what he wants to do, and then introduce the rest of your staff, and they can do what they want to do, Jay.
Well, we'll do this in kind of two layers. I'm going to first talk about the neighborhood park project, bring you up to date. I think you know probably about 80% of it by now, but I'll give you a kind of a run-through. Aaron Johnson from the community center is with us, and Jody Anderson, who is Janet Adams' assistant, part-time. Janet is at the summer concert tonight, so if I'm here, she needs to be there. We could have flipped it, but this is going to work out. But they'll give you an update on kind of the summer activities, so we'll run through this. But I've got a couple of things to set up first, so I'm going to just put a couple things in front of you.
And Jay, by the way, I made sure last week the concert was so good, the
And Jay, by the way, I made sure last week the concert was so good, the Ben Rice pad was so good, that Janet knew that it just wasn't fair to have concerts on council nights.
Put a couple of things up in front here. I think I mentioned to you before that we had 15 letters of support that were written to State Parks, Neighborhood, Neighborhood, and other organizations that are partnering with us in this park endeavor. These are excerpts from those. And I think they're important because we tend to think of dollars and cents. We tend to think of putting a park in underserved neighborhood, but we don't think sort of the depth of feeling that people have for their neighborhood and the depth of feeling for the positive consequences of placing parks throughout the city. These are just pieces of the letters that I thought spoke extremely well to the value of our park and our park system and our community, particularly in the Northwest Neighborhood. This carried a lot of weight when we moved to State Parks for our grant application. I think it's important that we recall those statements as we, you know, talk about the project. I'm going to put something on the overhead, but this is our park plan. I think you can see the first part of it. And let's see. I will bring this over later. So, okay, I'm going to have to stick this in and see if it works. So, all right. Is it one side or the other? You want to put the shiny silver side in? All right.
And it only goes one side?
Oh, let's see. Okay, we've got Jody's thing up here. So if I'm going to switch this, do I downsize that? Downsize that and then I've got to get to... I'm not seeing it. Not right before. Any options here? Doesn't come up, does it? We used the same one before. So what can we do, Rose? Okay, that did something. Let's see. There we go. Ah, perfect, okay. Perfect. And we do appreciate that. Okay. Okay, here we go. Very good. So you can see, is this in your way now, on your side? You want me to move it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's halfway up.
Put them behind the police chief. We can see them. But then we'd have to look at the police chief.
Is that your workway?
Yeah.
When we went to State Parks, they give you 20 minutes. And they do this over three days. So for eight hours a day for three days, they look at presentations every, about every 25 minutes because they're on a tight schedule. So I ripped through this in about 17. And the Kiwanis Club that's been helping us, who's sitting in the back here as well, and some others were in the audience, and we happened to squeeze in three comments from them as well. So we'll try to take only 20 minutes and we'll do this quickly. But you know that, first of all, the value of this neighborhood is it's close to home in a neighborhood that's underserved. I think you all have heard me say that and it's very important. And I can show you a pictorial of that. Barrier-free inclusive playground is a concept that is coming around throughout the country. And we're going to include that in our design. And that's critical to the success of this project. Tremendous community-wide support for this project. That started in 1999 when we did our master plan and we identified Northwest Neighborhood as underserved. And it continued through the bond levy project that we were successful in in November of 2000, our citizens committees in our master plan, citizens committees in our bond measure. And now our neighborhood citizens participating in the design process was critical to the success of not only the grant that you're aware of, but just simply engaging the public like we have always tried to do in all of our endeavors. So there is real meaning to these projects at the neighborhood level. And I think we've been successful or we're in the process of being successful with that. The heart and soul of the project comes from our neighbors and our other park advocates. That's really what we're all about and everything we've done in our department and everything I think the city does through community choices and those efforts to reach out. That really speaks to how the city conducts business and how we try to continue to engage our community. So you know the story of the acquisition. I won't go through that. Since 2013, we've been working with the Kiwanis Club group to select a project that they can get their club members engaged with. They have pledged $115,000 to this project. So tonight Larry Williams, Jerry Hart, Linda Switchenberg, who else is here? Gerald from the neighborhood, right?
Spouse of a member.
Spouse of a member, okay. And even Sam Justice from the neighborhood, he's here on behalf of the chamber, but he lives in the neighborhood for crying out loud. And he'll probably end up use the park. So we've got some good representatives from a club that's doing really good work for us. And we appreciate it very much. They went to the presentation in Salem. They've gone to every public meeting we've had with neighbors and facilitated those conversations. It's really been great. So you know, we started working with the neighborhood way back in January and you've seen some of those, the results of that. I'm going to give you the update. So I just want to make sure I know how to advance this thing before I turn it off.
Hit the down arrow.
The down arrow?
No, the down arrow.
Okay, there we go. So we know that we started out with the neighborhood designing their own parks and talking to us. And we advanced that. We talked about all the opportunities from the very beginning with a group of 50-plus people that participated in those workshops. We advanced it in a second workshop and we began to refine three major park designs. And then they voted on a variety of different park components. And we continued to advance that. Their preferred concept diagram B in that second, that came out of that second meeting, and we worked to refine that. That became the master plan you see down in front of me and went on the board here. It's really hard to read across this, of course, because it's at a distance and it seems follow. But I'm going to walk you through the components of it, just so you know what we're intending to do onsite. So you can see we've got wide open spaces, basketball court, and a playground from the, I don't have a pointer on this, but the playground on the lower right-hand corner, which is the southeast corner of the park. Starting there and moving up in a linear way up toward the northwest end or side of the park, we are hoping to create these linear pockets of play environments. So children particularly can move from one pocket to the next and have kind of a new adventure discovering those different amenities each time they go to the park. And we do that through berming and selective landscaping that makes it kind of adventuresome to move through those spaces. And each space will be a little bit different. Starting in the southwest corner, well, one thing I know is coming up, it's going to be saying that the playground's a big element. I mentioned the barrier-free playground, of course, it's right there in front of us. And it does move from the southeast up to the northwest.
What do you mean by barrier-free? Sorry, barrier-free, what is?
Barrier-free inclusive play means that the design of the park and the components that are selected for the park allow those that are either physically challenged or cognitively challenged, a more comprehensive opportunity to play without barriers or a more comprehensive opportunity to be included in play with their peers. And so we select a design that reduces barriers as much as possible for those that are physically challenged. And those play components that encourages play and maybe eventually removes some social barriers that might exist.
Okay, thanks.
So down in the southeast corner, we have nature play themed play here. In that corner of the park, there is a wetland footprint. We are working with this Division of State Lands now to mitigate or otherwise determine how we can get a permit to impact wetlands with our park design. So that wet area now will be incorporated into as much as possible a nature play themed area that may have some sand and water. Sand and water is such a popular play element and it's got a lot of developmental qualities to it just through the process of play with sand and water. So it's one of the things the neighborhood thought would be a good thing. We didn't want to overbuild because when you get water elements like at Discovery Meadows, those are pretty expensive. But a small water component with sand seems to be a very popular and useful tool, both just for fun and also for the inclusive and the developmental play qualities. Moving across, going up to, again, the next area, we see have a more sensory, kind of low intensity play that provides for some social interaction. And that might look like this. These are cozy domes on the upper left. You can crawl in and out of those things. But they are also constructed and placed purposely for kids who have autism, who sometimes self-adjust, they know they need to get away and get into a quiet space so they can just watch their friends for a while and get out of the whole humdrum of the playground. They can climb in and kind of watch through windows. And when they're ready to come back, they can jump out and play again. And there's another play value for everybody. The sensory panels have things that move or provide some kind of music or tones that you can play on those sensory panels. They have touch and feel type of experiences along those panels, sound and audible things that go toward that developmental experience. And then play tables, like a chessboard or checkerboards, again, the social element of it. So that's what that low intensity area might look like. We're still refining this, but this is what we have in mind. Moving to the next area, it's a little more intense. It provides sort of social and physical qualities to it. And it might look like this, where you have on the lower left, a teeter-totter-like component that moves people, gives you that sensory experience. It allows a lot of people to sit and play on it at the same time. So children that have a physical challenge can get on that very easily. So it is considered an accessible play component. Climbing rock, a sway fun on the bottom right, you can put a wheelchair in there and you can get the sense of swinging or the motion of swaying that is oftentimes not available to those in a wheelchair on a playground. And then a small toddler swing set and another cozy dome. Moving again up toward swing sets, the neighborhood and our friends at Mid Valley who are supporting this project say that swing sets are huge for their clients. The neighborhood said swing sets are popular for their children. So we're going to make sure we have plenty of swings to accommodate those populations. One of the really new products on the playground market is the swing set on the right, on the bottom. This allows a parent and child to face each other as they swing. And it's kind of a, it's going to be a very popular new piece. It just came on the market in the last eight months. So it's kind of a neat deal and we're going to try to include it if we can. In the larger play structure area, we're trying to elevate the sides so those lines are topographic lines that you see. And so our initial intention was to dig down a few feet and then to use that soil and soil from the wharf that they used, that they pulled out of the big area when they excavated that site. We were going to import some of that because the contractor had an obligation to move some of the spoils offsite. We were going to bring it over here and build these berms around the playground to give it elevation. So you can see where the platforms connect to the pathways. Those are upper platforms that connect to the upper four or five-foot wall or berms. So people in wheelchairs could get on top of the play structure and play with their friends who might have climbed up the boulder or climbed up the structure itself. So there's an interactive feature to that. You can move through from one on the north side there. You can move through on the top from one side and then come all the way through over to the boulder and back and exit onto the pathway, sort of on the left side there. You can come down the pathway, that slopes down into the lower playground area. And then kids can play underneath the play structure and through the boulder as well. So you have this interactive, both up and down access if you happen to have a wheelchair or some kind of a other mobility device. And it provides more interaction and more play opportunity. So it might look a little bit like this, where you see slides coming into, off the upper areas to the lower area. You see the boulders and the platforms coming from the upper, being accessed on the upper pathways. And it could look something like this. You can see the boulder on the right lower picture, someone can actually move through there. So it's very interactive. You can touch and feel and you can grab and you can play on that boulder. It's not just for climbing, but you can move through it. The same thing with under, you know, going through underneath the upper panels. You have access both underneath and through. And we thought that was just a great interactive feature. We found out the spoils are not available. They actually used them to backfill more than they thought over at the wharf. So we don't know exactly if this is going to pencil out at this time, but we're going to continue to investigate. It's one of those things that's not fully complete in terms of design. When we pick up the next stage of this project, we'll complete that process. The area adjacent and moving on, adjacent to that larger play area is, will look something like this. Again, swinging, it's a lot more intense. You have the upper, the blue, I forget the name of the component, but the blue spinner, which is up on top. It's a pretty exciting piece of equipment. And it's considered inclusive in terms of ADA compliance or ADA accessibility, as does this swinging component down below. You can get multiple people on it and it is something that's very popular in the inclusive playgrounds. The, I wish I could remember the name of it, but the table allows someone to pull themselves through. It's kind of a challenging thing. It also gives that sensory feeling of those rollers. It's, I guess it's called a roller table. But it's highly used in inclusive playgrounds for people that can strengthen themselves by pulling and just get that experience of moving through something like that. Mid Valley loved that component when they saw it in a presentation board. They thought their clients would love the challenge of that. I have, when we worked for landscape structures to get some advice about components like this, they've built inclusive playgrounds. We asked them what components work, not what components look good or make it look interesting. And then they sit unused. What components have you built that you know work? And then we visited playgrounds up in Portland and other areas and we saw these same elements being used. So we are targeting components that we know meet the inclusive accessibility and are actually being used onsite. So we have a lot of confidence in the value of our purchase for these products. And then the last thing is a glider, but it'll be a double, sort of a double-rail glider. One with an adaptive chair for those that needs special support and one that has the gliding seat for an able-bodied child. But you can now, instead of waiting to turn and just being by yourself, you can race your sibling. You can race... your sibling, you can race your neighbor. Again, coming back to the inclusive play. Excuse me. Uh, we're still deciding on what kind of, uh, family shelter, uh, that the neighborhood wants. We've looked at octagonal shapes, uh, the, the more formalized, uh, shape up top, uh, the shelter up top's about twice as expensive as the one below, and there's a couple other northwest-type themed kind of shelters we're looking at, but we're still working on that. And then throughout the park, uh, in a couple different locations, uh, we've been requested by those who walk and jog on the, on the corridor to, uh, put some, um, just some static, uh, fitness, uh, stations there, so if they want to do a push-up, if they want to do a pull-up, they want to do something for their abs, they'll run down the corridor, uh, that they, you know, down that west side corridor, uh, work out a little bit and run home. So we're gonna try to accommodate that if we can as well. That corridor is a very popular one, by the way. A lot of walkers and joggers are using it in Northwest McMinnville, and so, uh, this is part of the information that came out in our, in our public, uh, neighborhood meetings. So you can see the northwest side is up there, uh, underserved. If you look at the yellow, uh, uh, the yellow, the, the yellow, um, sites that you see a, around that, uh, are parks that are the closest to that northwest neighborhood, so you can see why it was considered underserved. There's no developed park up in the northwest quadrant of town. The great thing about that is that we have the corridor running through it. For, almost from Second Street up to Baker Creek Road, people from the neighborhood, uh, the, the termination on the sou, the south terminus of the corridor is about three-quarters of a mile from the park. Your greatest value are parks that are within a half or, uh, or a, a mile within, uh, most neighbors within a half, or, or, or a full mile of the park, because they know people will then either walk or ride their bikes sometime. The corridor allows that safe, uh, passage off-street, and it's great because it connects so much of the neighborhood to the south, and it brings neighbors from along the corridor to the park safely. And, uh, that's just a huge, that's a huge benefit to that whole northwest quadrant of McMinnville. A closer up look, uh, you can see the open, uh, areas around the park still, uh, yet to be developed, and most of those open spaces, uh, will be either single-family or multifamily residents. There's some commercial up on the corner of Baker Creek and Hill Road, um, and then, uh, the lower open space, south and west of the park, is an elementary school site that will be developed at some point in probably the next five to 10 years. But most of that area, including above Baker Creek Road, is gonna be residential, and so the park's going to really serve pe, that, that density is gonna go up pretty quick, now that the economy is beginning to change. So this is what the corridor looks like if you haven't been up there for a while. Uh, in fact, here's a cloudy day, it's probably cooler, and you'd enjoy your jog. Last month or two, you might not have liked that, 100 degrees at all. But this is the corridor, it's well-maintained, our, our park staff does a great job with it, we get a lot of compliments. And the park, uh, this is looking south, this is looking north, and the park, uh, about a third of the park will be to the right, and two-thirds to the left. And so the whole park will be about 4.11 acres. One of the big questions, um, that we get asked in these grants, is who's gonna maintain it? And here's our park staff. Uh, we all knew going in when we talked to Kent initially, and now to Martha, we know that once this comes on, our park staff that's been cut back over the years during the economy is gonna need some help, and, uh, you'll hear more about that coming up, but that'll be a critical component of long-term maintenance, and, uh, I, I know that there'll be a, uh, a, a need to advance this, and everybody agrees that that's, that'll be necessary. But, these guys do an outstanding job, and, uh, I wanted to show the park, uh, the, the grant committee that we've got the, the folks out here who are dedicated and do a great job, so. Um, uh, Northwest Park Neighbors, all the letters of support, uh, McMinnville Kiwanis Club, of course, invaluable, uh, partners in this whole process moving forward. Mid Valley Rehabilitation onboard with us, we've met with them, we'll be meeting with their clients again about the further development of the playground itself, and of course, they've dedicated some dollars to the Kiwanis auction to, to the project because they think it's that important. And the Willamette Education Service District and their preschool classes, uh, of children who are challenged, uh, they've reviewed the park components, uh, we've had good conversations with their director, and they're very much onboard with us as well. So, that is, uh, that's it. Um, I did invite, anyone wanna just have any kind of, uh, observation?
Jay, we've had people doing maintenance, Lucy and I went out and trimmed a few bushes. It seems like along the lines of maintenance, you probably recruit quite a few people just from the neighborhood who'd be able to do some of the scudwork as far as keeping the park clean and so on.
Uh, we use, we've had great opportunities at times to use large groups of, uh, but as a practice to maintain on a daily basis, it's probably not the most effective or safest. Uh, but when we have, uh, large groups that come into Discovery Meadows, for instance, or, uh, and do a lot of the handwork our crew just can't keep up with, or like yourselves, you've kind of adopted the green way to say, hey, we'll pick up and we'll do a few little things, and we get that agreement with our staff and know who's out there. Uh, yes.
Or workdays.
Yeah, or workdays, yeah. So we, that's valuable to us, uh, but in terms of, you know, really the, the, the real depth of a park maintenance program, uh, we're gonna need someone to help, so. Good point. Um, I guess the only, oh, Linda.
This might be a good time for Kiwanis to express all of their appreciation to Jay. He's been able to do this, uh, well, he has continued to communicate with the members of his local parks today. You know, it is a huge undertaking for our club, but Jay has made it very easy, and his communication's been fantastic. We've been all, and as we know, we're happy, so we can discuss things for him, and we just really appreciate it, Jay.
We've worked a long time together, so it makes it easy on all of us, and, uh, we appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, any questions for Jay Kelly? Let's start with you.
No, it looks really exciting, and now I have a better perspective of where it was going to be at. I kinda thought that was the location, but I wasn't sure. No, this is gonna be really exciting. I walk there frequently, so it'll be fun to see it go together. And thank you, Kiwanis, so much for bringing us, it's wonderful. Really exciting.
It's a good project. Kelly.
Well, in recent months, I've become a much more regular patron of parks, uh, thanks to my son, and, um, which is great, and I'm really excited about the elements of this. Um, you know, I've, as I've traveled with my son going long trips, it's always nice to know where there's a park, and I've visited some pretty sad parks. Uh, Google Maps doesn't tell you the quality, you know, you just show up, and, and I am just so proud of the park systems that we have here, they're just fantastic, and I, it's the same thing I hear from, from my friends and neighbors, it's just really great, and, um, I really appreciate the, it seems like you really went above and beyond working with the, with the community on the development of this, and it's gonna make a big impact in a positive way, and there's gonna be a great deal of ownership, uh, to this, to this particular park from the community, I think that's just terrific. So, thanks, thanks, Jay.
Hey, Scott.
Likewise, Jay, I, uh, number one, thank your staff. I mean, I'm glad you put them up. I'm, I'm walking a whole lot more, and so Discovery Meadows is my little area, and then going down the cozine of the Parkway Trail, I'm seeing them out there, so let them know, thank you. Um, as Kevin indicated, you're partnering with the community, and I've had a lot of people share that they really appreciate, and that's our way of doing it, you know, in not only with parks, but every aspect of the city. So you've continued that process, and I think that's one of the elements that makes us so livable, is that, you know, we just don't take our vision, but we collectively bring it all in, and then we try to work it out, and there are cost constraints and all kinds of things, but when it's all said and done, I, I, and I think the counselors, uh, are excited from that perspective. Communication's the other piece, and if I'm not mistaken, in your park quarterly, it had some information on, on the park systems, and it had one of those maps, and I appreciate, I, I think we just need to keep that out in front of people, that, uh, you know, we do have a network of parks that are phenomenal, um, and so, thanks from that perspective.
Thank you, Scott.
Right.
I just echo, uh, the other counselors, and that, uh, I appreciate the work that's done, and especially in the seeking, uh, playground equipment that you saw was, uh, being used, so that there was a, a design component, but that you went beyond that to make sure that, that, in providing this park, that you're providing things that are speaking to the people that you're specifically trying to speak to, so thank you for the hearing that.
Jay, from, from me, I think you're, uh, what I envision is your love and dedication to parks, and the citizens make sure we have the parks that serve the citizens. I don't think we'll find anybody better than that, and I think that's probably, because of Jay, that's the reason a lot of our parks are what they are, and I think it goes back to Galen, and, and you carried on there, everybody, but I, the only thing that makes me sad is I look at Discovery Meadows, and I look at the West Side Park, and I look at this new park, and the beautiful parks we have, and that years and years ago that we didn't have foresight, because if we take the Linear Park, it's not all that far from Discovery Meadows Park, but you just can't quite get there, and if we take along, um, Redmond Hill Road, and there's that block between West Vale and Hill Road where there really isn't a pathway through there, because it stops at West Vale, that I hope, and I think we have learned a lesson, that when we, when we talk about development in general, that we have so many parks, especially on the west side, that are so good, but they're so close to being tied together, but they're not quite tied together, and that we do everything we can to ensure, and this is a primary example, uh, that sooner or later I could see this park, either an underpass on Baker Creek, a small pedestrian underpass on Baker Creek Road, going over to that area, and maybe back towards, um, uh, the Wildlife Park, you know, uh, and eventually where all those parks can be tied together, so, but if, if, it makes me, as mayor, very proud to be, uh, of our park system, especially if you take the number of acres of parks we have, and, and Jay showed a picture of his staff, and, I mean, I don't know how many acres per staff that is, but that's just, that's just phenomenal, what you get out of your staff for maintaining the parks with the number of acres of parks we have.
And we have a, I think we're about 260 developed acres. Uh, just a point of clarification, uh, the, the park maintenance staff is actually under public works.
Right.
But we obviously work very closely together, and they are an integral part of our plan, because we try to design parks that are as maintenance easy or efficient as we can, so.
Because one of the first things that you, I think we all know, as cities get in trouble, one of the first things that goes are libraries, the next things that could usually get less emphasis put to them are parks, and, you know, all those things that citizens really need, but they're usually the first things to go, but we've done a really good job in McMinnville because of our management staff, of keeping those things, you know, focus on those things for the citizens, so. Jay, we'll turn over to the second part of your program. Second part. Uh, this is a fun part here, too. Uh, we've had a great summer program, I'm gonna ask Jody Anderson and, uh, Aaron Johnson to come up, and, uh, you might have to find your.
Oh, she already brought it up for me.
Okay, so you're good, so, well, make sure it's still there for you. And, uh, they've done a great job of, uh, filling our brochure and community with some really super programs, some things that we're trying for the first time, and, uh, you'll get the chance to hear about those right now. Okay.
Hi, guys, my name's Jody Anderson, and, um, I'm currently working with the Parks and Rec Department here in Mac. I specialize in KOB enrichment planning, uh, registration and curriculum development, and more recently, I program planned a middle school day camp for the community center. Uh, tonight I'm going to discuss this past year's KOB enrichment, our current Starz Day Camp highlights, and a new Parks and Rec Program Adventures in Kid Care. Um, let's start off with KOB. This last year of KOB was excellent for us, um, we really defined our rotations and made them even more enriching. We have three rotations every day, Creation Station, which encompasses arts, literacy, and drama, and we have our STEM, which is our science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and our Fit Zone, which is nutrition and fitness-based. Um, plus, we have homework help every day that, uh, replaces our Power Hour from last year, so kids get about 30 minutes of dedicated homework time. Uh, last year we had 449 kids, uh, in KOB, and we noticed that more kids were getting financial assistance now that we are providing the tools and resources, such as ActiveNet, um, it provides payment plans, which makes the registration more efficient and customer service friendly, um, and definitely more affordable, because they can pay in chunks. Uh, last year with KOB, we had 43 part-time folks working five days a week, and about 25 staff working two to five days a week. Um, about 35 of our staff members were Linfield work-study students, they get three-quarters of their salary from Linfield, and we cover the other quarter. I believe that Linfield continues to be a great partner, not only in funding, um, but also a ready resource for top-notch dedicated staff members. Um, a big chunk of our staff is college kids, and they provide an excellent service for us. Um, this last year, one of my duties was to bring new and exciting enrichments to KOB, and I brought eight new enrichments to KOB last year, um, but I'm gonna highlight, highlight four of those enrichment programs that I thought, um, did a great job. We had Zany Zoo, um, Zany Zoo Pets enrichment presentation included, uh, many resourceful facts and ideas regarding habitat for exotic animals, conservation and assistance in making educated decisions, not only about the kind of pets, um, that fit into the kids' families, but more specifically to educate our KOB kids on proper care for these animals if they had an exotic animal. Uh, Stephen Taylor, he was our anti-bullying ventriloquist, he was really amusing and really thoughtful, uh, he brought both sides of the bullying issue into the open, and shares practical ways to help, uh, the victim, bystanders, and the bully, so not just dedicating, um, here's an example, great picture, uh, we're helping out everyone in a bullying situation. Um, Stephen uses his buddy Rudy O'Reilly and Bark the Bulldog, uh, to act out scenarios and actively engage kids by asking them to come up and volunteer. Uh, Sefan Nesbit, uh, was our local artist in residence this year, she provided large group projects, um, of about 10 to 20 kids, and our KOB kids learned different art techniques, usually involving paint. Uh, Humley School of Music is a local music school that came out to teach our kids in groups of about 10 to 20 the musical talent of Poco. Um, it was really entertaining to, to see the students use their hands, their arms, their legs to make musical beats to go along with popular radio songs. Uh, there's many more I'd love to share, but for the sake of time, um, I'll move on, but if you have any questions, feel free to email me or ask during the question part. Um, a challenge that we kind of, uh, I, I'm working on is developing programs for our no-school days, because we have a lot of kids that rely on KOB as their care, so, um, trying to develop programs on no-school days, so that's something I'm working on for this next school year. Um, our Starz Day Camp is our eight-week day camp program, run Monday through Friday for kids ages, uh, well, in kindergarten to sixth grade, and it's just in the summertime. Parents have the opportunity to drop their kids off between 7:30 and 9:00, and pick up from 4:00 to 5:30, which gives parents the flexibility, and we don't have all these parents coming at one time, um, so we like to help out the parents as much as we can. Um, from 9:00 to 4:30, participants are at Newby Elementary School, um, typically we're doing some indoor actor activities, we kind of find, follow the same KOB schedule with rotation, so they're getting that enrichment aspect. Um, on the average week, they'll go to the pool, the library, the city park, a trip to Discovery Meadows, a summer reading programs on Wednesdays, and a field trip usually out of town, and we walk everywhere except for the field trips. Um, we wanted to highlight a few field trips, the Oregon Guide Dog for the Blind Training School, kids gotta go and watch how these dogs are trained, um, it was really exciting. Um, the Mission Mill Museum, and the Capitol Rotunda, the Senate and the House, they can learn about local legislative and government in our, in our state. Um, our behind-the-scenes week, um, they visit the fire department, the gallery theater, and the police department, so they can learn about what's going on in our community and resources. Um, we hope that 60 would enroll, because in past years we've averaged 50 to 55, um, registered kids. This year, all of a sudden, registration exploded, and we had 10 more kiddos per week, averaging 70, um, and there's still a waiting list of about 5 to 20, depending on each week. Um, why do we think this happened? Uh, basically, the economy is getting better and more people are working, which means they can afford our program. Um, we also run a good program with fun and well-trained, experienced staff. Um, almost every single one of our staff members in summer camps this program have been working for Parks and Rec for four-plus years. Um, our staff also plans a wide variety of creative activities, um, and we also try our best not to turn any kiddo away. Uh, Starz had every session filled with a waiting list before the summer even started, um, in spite of increasing the price 10% from last year, which averaged about $10 more. Uh, we hope to continue working with the school district and finding space that can accommodate our growing program, um, and eventually never turn any kid away due to enrollment minimums or maximums. Um, Adventures in Kid Care is a new program that we built from sc- scratch just this year, Janet Adams and I. Um, the goal was to provide a safe The goal was to provide a safe, fun, hands-on babysitter training camp to kiddos entering the seventh through ninth grade, more specifically, more opportunities for middle schoolers to do something at the community center. It was very successful. We had nine kids registered Monday through Thursday from 9:00 till 12:00 p.m. most days, but with two days being longer days from 9:00 to 2:30 for specific trainings. Students walked away with American Red Cross Babysitting Certifications, American Heart Associations CPR and First Aid Certifications, an Oregon Food Handler's Card, interviewing skills and a resume preparation skill, as well as hands-on volunteer experience with school-aged children in Starz and with an infant. So they got a lot out of it. It was great. We plan to offer it again in the fall, coordinating with no-school days and one weekend day, and then the other two days, they'll go and volunteer after school at our KOB sites. Students will continue the hands-on experience, like I said, with KOB and it'll be either at Grand Haven or Newby, so they have easy access from the middle schools. Ultimately, this will be a revolving camp for participants being asked to come back for various volunteer opportunities with Parks and Recreation and continue their role as junior leaders. Overall, it's a great year for KOB side and Starz. This year will be even better with more and more enrichments coming. I'm already working, we have 10 enrichments already coming and five new ones on top of the eight from last year. So one that I'm really excited for is that we're going to be partnering with the snack program and they're going to come and do a healthy lifestyle with our kiddos. So, thank you for having me. If you guys have any questions, feel free to...
Any questions?
No, it just sounds really exciting, though.
Well, well, well done. Very well.
Well thought out. Very exciting.
Yeah, it's great to get my grandkids involved in this.
All right, you guys ready?
We're always ready.
Okay, you're always ready. So I've been asked to kind of let you guys know our fun, new, exciting things we have going on this summer, and a lot of it's going to keep going on beyond this summer. One of them, I'm sure we mentioned earlier, I think the last time we were here, was our survival camps that we've been working with, working with a gentleman out of Corvallis who also works with Corvallis Parks and Recreation. We've done three so far. We've had 39 kids enrolled in those three. We have a week-long survival camp coming up the end of the month. We have nine kids enrolled in that class so far. And some of the things that kids have been learning are how to build shelters with items they find out in nature, fire mastery, so what tools they need to help them build a fire, orienteering, medicine and tracking. They've also learned how to find food in the wild, make traps and even create their own cordage. Another fun item we have going on is a program we call Little Music Makers. It's for pre-K, kindergarten-age kids, a younger group, and it's more or less just a kid sing-along class. We're trying to, starting to theme every week. It's every Thursday morning. This last one, the theme was bugs. So we had a bunch of bugs taped on the floor, leading up to the room and everything, and the kids get to play with instruments, sing along with our leader and just have a good old time. Another fun opportunity that I'm really proud of actually, and it's improving week by week, something we, it's an idea I got from the Baton Rouge Parks and Recreation Department in Louisiana. Theirs is called Brex on the Go and G-A-A-U-X because it's in Louisiana. Ours, we're just calling the Rec Mobile. So we're sending out our Parks and Rec pickup with a bunch of fun games and activities for kids, along with two rec leaders, to a different park every Thursday for a couple of hours, and they're just leading the kids. And we've been having, you know, water balloon fights and sponge relays and a new, a different version, because of the weather, we've been doing a lot of water stuff, a different version of Duck Duck Goose where you drip water on their heads and then you splash it on their head, an entire cup, and they have to chase you around the circle. That one's been a lot of fun. Another brand-new opportunity we're really excited for, hasn't happened yet, I've got nine kids enrolled thus far, is a video game-making class. We're actually going to work with the library to use their computers. The kids get to show up every Saturday for, I believe, four weeks and they build their own video game. And if they bring a flash drive, they can save the game to their flash drive and play it at home whenever they want, and they can even make adjustments to the game as they see is necessary. And a fun opportunity that, again, hasn't happened yet, we're excited for it, we think it's going to go well, is family dodgeball. Every time we have kids dodgeball, all the parents stay and they sit on the sidelines and they're just itching to get in there and play, and every time they ask, why can't we play? And we finally said, you know what? Go for it. Kids are throwing hard, though, so we're hoping the parents are safe. This summer, last summer and this summer, we've seen a big, a big growth in our tennis program. I think a lot of it is due to a fun partnership we have with Linfield College. We're getting you to use their tennis courts. And we're also using, we're hiring on a Linfield tennis player to teach those classes. This year, our instructor is, she's done a wonderful job and she's actually a USTA-certified instructor, which just adds that much more value to the program. Gymnastics is going as well as ever. We've seen it kind of ebbs and flows. We're still on the rise, though. Our space is limited. We're searching for more space whenever we can. We found how we word things is important to registration numbers. We had a parent-child gymnastics class that was getting two or three or four kids per class. We changed the word gymnastics to movement and for some reason, that really rung well with parents and we've having eight to 10 kids in that class ever since. So we're learning lessons and having fun tweaking things as we can when we feel there's a need to do that. And not only are our classes improving and growing and being more fun, but we're also seeing some new and exciting rentals at the community center. The end of June, we hosted the American Legion, their state convention was at the community center. Got a lot of good feedback from those guys. They've actually asked the local American Legion group how they did it and things, working with us, to give on that information to future sites. They're really excited because we have padded seats. I guess they don't usually have padded seats, so I'm glad we're able to accommodate that. And it's opened a good dialogue between us and them. They've been more than willing to jump in and help us when they can, and I think it's going to provide some good volunteer opportunities from them for us in future events such as the triathlon. We're seeing, and to kind of go with that, we're seeing more conferences and conventions coming in. The local Yamhill County Extension and the Master Gardeners has brought their conference over to us, as well as Yamhill Community Care Organization is having their conference in the community center as well. A couple of trends, we're seeing things trend towards smaller, I think this is the same as last time, smaller events, weddings, quinceañeras, birthday parties, they're getting smaller from 50 to 100 people as opposed to 250 to 500. So it's just something we're aware of and we're looking to, at ways we can, we can use that to our advantage and our spaces to our advantage. And one more fun little tidbit, our park reservations this year, we have hit the same number we did all of last year. So that was 147 park reservations all of last summer. We're already there this summer. We're looking to get a little bit beyond that. And so far, the revenue's been $9,008, which goes directly to parks maintenance to help those guys out wherever it can. I guess that's all I have. If you guys have any more questions, let us know.
Any questions for Aaron, Scott?
I just, I'm excited at the innovative way we're growing and growing the program. I think it speaks so highly of our, generally, I mean, I look at our parks, I look at our athletics in the summertime, has always been a hit, and then, you know, the after-school program and some of the other types of things, even this bringing some of the conventions in. I can tell you right now, when the American Legions were in, the motels were full. And I talked to a number of individuals that they had no rooms available and they were using their facilities, too. So all of that is adding to a lot of aspects of just keeping the community that special place to be.
Thank you, Scott. Kevin? Hey, Kelly.
What is the age range for the computer game class?
Oh, boy.
You're too old, Kevin.
I believe it's eight to 14, if I remember correctly.
14, okay.
Yeah.
Remy?
Thank you.
You know, again, you guys just amaze me. It's just not the parks, it's the programs. We have the varied programs, but I think what amazed me the most is where a lot of organizations, they have a program and if the program doesn't work, they just continue with the same program, the same program, where we, as you talked about the tweaking, you know, and just changing words or doing away with this program, adding this program, and I think our flexibility really makes a, makes a big difference in the success of our programs. So, thank both of you. I know, we know, the community center isn't probably the best place, but it was the people place, it was a really great facility, but we know now that probably it's not the best facility to do a lot of things in, but we'll hopefully someday be able to address that. Okay, any more questions for either one of them?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And Jay, thank you again for having your staff, having your staff here. Okay, having no more business, we'll move on to advice and information items. So do any of the councilors have any reports, any of the committee or board assignments? Kelly, do you have anything?
Not really.
Okay, Kevin?
Pretty quiet.
Hey, Scott?
Just a couple of updates. I just wanted to let the council know that Visit McMinnville, we met July 1st, we signed our documents, the Visit McMinnville Committee is up and going, it is on their own. Doug sent us some information that we're following up on. We've got a Google Doc site where we've housed a lot of our documents, we've set up a Gmail account, we're in the process of doing an executive director recruitment. We talked at length at that meeting. We're looking for a local advocate for our financial partner with Greenstone Financial. And then Doug also gave a link to us of a USA Today article that talked about the wine in Yamhill County and that Mack is kind of right in the middle of that. So good things happening, I just wanted to update you on that. Tomorrow afternoon, we're going to meet with the mayor's advisory committee for, well, right now it's with KOB and our charitable process, so we'll be meeting on that. And then the last thing that I would have is this coming, this coming Thursday, we're going to be meeting with our Urban Renewal Group and we're going out and we've got a consultant that's coming in to look at the enhancements, we're looking, some of the enhancements and cityscapes, those types of things with Alpine Avenue, and just to give us some direction because if we can, if we can overlay some of that with transportation money and some of the urban renewal money, we wanted to know which way to go doing that. So Citizens Committee has been put together to take a look at that. So those are a few things that, it's taken a little bit of time, but it's here now, so.
Okay, Remy? Larry's not here. I'll just give a little update on the bypass and the Parkway Committee. As you might have read in the paper, that from a state standpoint, the transportation funds, the Courtney, the House decided that there won't be anything coming out this year, not even be a vote on any transportation funding at all out of the legislature, so that's dead for this year. We're still in the running for a federal tiger grant. One of the things is it does look like on the federal level, there is not going to be any long-term transportation funding that will come out of the next couple legislative sessions due to, number one, due to that this will be probably the last major session before we have a change in, change in leadership, so not knowing, they're probably not, the Senate and the House probably won't do anything this year and they probably won't do anything next year, and so we don't expect any, hoping getting any federal funding. But that being said, some of the interesting things going on with the bypass, at the end of next week, the new Farquhar quarry overpass is supposed to be open and then by the end of August, actually by the third week in August, we should see them setting the major beams over 99W at the south end of Lafayette and prepping that. You might have already saw that they're starting to put up some of the signage supports. It looks kind of strange sitting out there in the middle of left coming into Dundee.
Yeah, I want to take a left.
Where you take a left, but those are actually being placed all along the route right now. But we've had some good meetings and we're still hoping to get a tiger, tiger grant to do some more enhancements of phase one. But like Jody said, we don't know really economic development, what that, what impact that have, everybody's thinking it's going to have a big, big impact, but we really just, we just don't know yet. So other than that, that's it on the bypass committee. Let's go around, Department Heads. Chief, you have anything good for us?
Yeah, real quickly, it's been a few weeks since we met, I think. Just catching you up, the 4th of July, there was no law enforcement issues out there at the Evergreen Museum and Turki Rama went well, there was, we had to debrief on Monday, that was, that went really well. We're in the process, I think I've kept you guys up to speed. Figure probably the end of September, our lateral officers are all going to be trained and that's a, that's a relief. And we've obviously also been busy in the last couple of weeks with, our agency took the lead on the officer-involved shooting here in Mack, so calls for service, we are remaining steady, but the investigators are really busy. Couple ticklers is August 4th is our national night out. We're moving to a centralized theme with the fire department and the police department. Instead of traveling around to different neighborhoods, we're going to be doing it at Discovery Meadows, thanks to Jay, and we think that's going to be a little bit easier, get to spend a little bit more time with the community versus just hopping around for about 10 minutes at a pop. So Tuesday, August 4th at about 5:30, 6 o'clock, I think is when we're going to kick off, and that's all I have for you.
Okay, thank you. Jay, anything else?
Just two quick things. Brandon Arts, who you had, have met in the past, took a job in Vancouver. He was assisting Aaron at the community center. We have invited a candidate to come and visit with us tomorrow and she's coming in from Missouri, so she's on her way as we speak. So we're kind of trying to close that gap in our staffing soon, if we can. And then secondly, we've been working with McKay Spicido on the master plan for the Northwest Neighborhood Park, but because of the new pure professional services procurement process we have to go through, we have opened an RFP process for qualifications-based selection for the next phase. So McKay Spicido will submit for that and I'm sure there'll be two or three others that will as well, so that process has just begun.
You know, I think Jody said, Jay, I think it's interesting that when Jody was making her, doing her presentation, that every time they get somebody trained, they leave because they do such a good job training. I think that's kind of like you, you know, anytime we get anybody just really good training, they're good, they end up leaving and it's, it's a great situation, makes you real proud, but it's not a really great situation because all your good people leave, you know, so. Okay, thanks, Jay. Doug? Hey, Rose? I will not be there. Okay, thank you. Candace?
Nothing, thank you.
Are you going to go? For those in the audience that don't know, Candace will be leaving us at the end of September, so I don't expect her to have a lot between now and the end of September, but 15 and a half, 15 years and five months, isn't it, then?
It'll be 15 years and 10 months.
15 years and 10 months, we'll be losing our wonderful city attorney, but I'm sure, Candace, that you won't be able to be replaced, but we'll find somebody who can try.
Thank you.
Martha, anything from you? Nothing from our city manager. Does anybody else have anything? If not, I'll adjourn the meeting.
the meeting.